So I call the Wynton Woods Work Session Meeting to order. Randy, I did already said that Mr. McGowan's was not going to be here tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so if you will make that note that he was absent from this meeting.
Okay, want me to call the board now?
Yes, you can, please.
Okay, Dr. Coupalotti?
Here.
Mr. McGowan's, Mrs. Rogless?
Here.
Mr. Birdy?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here. Okay, so our first item on our agenda is the under-board topics. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the virtual graduation, get a recap and review, see what everybody thought about it. You know, I've watched it, I've, I've thought it was very well put together, but I just wanted to kind of get everybody, all the board members input, maybe get some input from Mr. Smith, so what did everybody think about it? Don't everybody speak at once?
It would have been great if, if everyone could have been there in person, but barring that, I think that the presentation was lovely.
Well, I can tell you that I had opportunity to see Taylor's graduation, and, oh gosh, was it Sycamore's, somebody else that had theirs online just prior to ours? And the presentation that Wynton Woods put on was far better than what the other high schools had put together. So I was very pleased, you know, that with how ours looked, it almost looked like back when my, I think it was maybe like 2002 and 2007 graduates, they did something called the End of the Year CD. And that CD would have like all the pictures from all the sports and all the different things. It was sort of like the yearbook on a CD. And that graduation really kind of brought me back to that because I thought it was really good the way they flashed the different activities, pictures, when parents were with kids picking up their robes. I, I, I thought that they did a really good job with how it all's run very smoothly together, so. I was pleased with it, but I just wanted to hear what everybody else thought about it. Taylor's before ours was very, I don't know, staccato. It, it, it didn't have, it didn't have any life in it. I thought ours breathed life into the, into the presentation, so. But I didn't know what everybody else thought.
I thought it was well done. I was very pleased to see how there was an integration of pictures and videos and all of the elements that are connected with the graduation, and then also making sure that it is focused on the students and not a whole lot of talking, you know, just the experience, you know, from the student's perspective. And granted that they only had a certain amount of time, that they had to put all of this content within, what, an hour, Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
About an hour, within an hour. And then having the opportunity for the students to see the teachers at the end, giving their congratulations to them. I don't know if everybody watched it to the very end. I thought that was really cool and kudos because I had to do my video twice. And you all know I hate that type of stuff. And just working with the IT department, you know, just, you know, trying to do the flip grid and get it in and knowing that they have a certain, you know, certain time constraints to get everything done. And, you know, I felt kind of bad because I was like, ah, I should have had that in a lot earlier. But I, you know, I just thought that they did a really good job. I did have the opportunity to see other graduations and I experienced graduation. So just recognizing that leadership has to do, you can't necessarily follow another person's graduation format because you have to do things that are connected within the culture of your school and how people might react to certain things. How do you manage, you know, people manage, you know, because when people want to do their own thing? Because there was, Roger Bacon had a variation, theirs was also televised, but they were so small that they could do a variation of televised, having it Facebook Live. And, but they were very strict as far as, you know, you get one car with just parents and the student. But they did have it where, because they're kind of set up where they have a ramp that students can walk up. You know, you just have to do whatever you can do within the confines of your own school district and people management and the way that you're set up. So anyways, I thought it was a good, they did a good job giving the constraints that we're, we're in now. If we were in New York like I am now and the governor is saying you can do in-person graduations, you know, because they wouldn't graduate to the end of June. So there's a lot of time, a lot of data, a lot of things that, that come out that allow a decision like that, so kudos to them.
I thought the graduation speakers were really excellent, the, the three speakers. They were really, really good. I mean, um, yeah, they, they did a great job. Mr. Birdy, do you have any input on the graduation?
I'm in a room with a grandfather clock and it was just going off, so I put it on mute.
I put on a mute too.
No, I, I agree with everything you guys said. I thought the, the student speakers did a fantastic job. It was nice seeing the, the teachers at the end congratulating the students. And so Mr. Martin and his team and I'm sure the technology staff all did a, did a really nice job. Mr. Smith, you know, you guys did a great job putting that together.
Yeah. I agree. I, I, I think that the, after the graduation, the distribution of diplomas, I was in contact with Mr. Smith and he sent me a picture of, you know, the diplomas and the information where the graduates came in and picked up their diplomas at the high school. And that went off without a hitch. I mean, I, I just think kudos to the staff, to everyone who put that together. I think they did a fantastic job. And I don't think it was any small feat. And I do think that in so many ways, you know, this is, this is just a strange time, but it's going to be a wonderful keepsake that that class of twenty-two, 2020 will have. You know, I, I like the idea of when they put the student's picture up, they had like two or three facts about them, like where they were going to school, what they were interested in. I mean, that's just, I mean, we, we've never been able to do that before in a graduation, so. You know, I just think they did a great job with putting it together. And for those students who arrived with their parents, when they picked up their cap and gown, their picture was, you know, flashed on the screen, you know. So whereas there wasn't necessarily a walk-up for the students to walk around and, and get their diplomas specifically, I think that they did a great job. And I even asked Mr. Smith, I said, I know we don't have much money to do something to say thank you to them because that was really outside of what their normal confines of what they do to prepare for graduation. And even the stage, I thought the, the, how they had decorated the stage for the speakers. I just thought everything looked very, very nice and, and I, I was really pleased with it. I really was. And, and I know that, you know, people, oh, we want them to walk up, we want to shake hands, we want. And that, in, in a, in a perfect world, if, if we weren't dealing with quarantine and COVID-19, maybe that's what we would be able to do, but under the circumstances.
How many students graduated?
Say again, please?
How many students did we have graduate?
Was it? Mr. Smith, you're muted. I, I was going to give a number, but you probably, you know, they're better.
Yeah, with some of the ones that could not be seen because they couldn't, for whatever reason, you did see some blank spots in there that we covered with just a photo bar, but they were about close to three twenty.
See, that's a lot to manage. That's a lot to manage when you have, you know, when, you know, people try to compare.
Right, that's a whole difference than fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that's a whole difference.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, the, the other part of that, I know that there were parents that wanted to do a parade. And so we, we started looking at some of the other options and we started thinking about the have and have not. Some parents don't have cars. And then you have some parents that don't have sunroofs in cars, some parents that don't have convertibles. And we were looking at the safety aspects of kids just kind of hanging out of the window of cars. We, we didn't want to portray that image because we thought it looked dangerous, but it, it didn't look like the most auspicious occasion like it was supposed to be. And then the other thing that we thought about was, we thought about the, the in-house piece where it would be five parents invited or five family members and they would kind of walk the kids through, take their photo. Each kid gets fifteen minutes, that takes about four days. And we do know that, I, I know that when you guys graduated from high school, I know it feels like yesterday. Your best friend is going to wait for you outside if they've got their fifteen minutes. We didn't want to create any issues, nothing with the Forest Park Police about recruiting them, hiring them, because that could have increased our costs if we have off-duty police officers are going to be there to make sure the social distancing was, was not going to be the, the issue. For as many parents, there were several parents that says, well, they had made contact to Kroger's and Kroger says that we can have a small parade going through the lot of Kroger's. Kroger's is our neighbor and we want to create the best relationship. I can't foresee having three hundred and twenty cars go through the Kroger's parking lot. That would have been efficient. I, I just, we couldn't imagine doing that. So this was it and, and I'm glad that the board appreciated how it was done. It was a very classy event. And what we're hoping to do in the future is keep some versions, version of the original graduation that we usually have in some portion of this. Because like Dr. Johnson, I, I too, and everybody who tuned in, really liked, we knew more about the kids, their GPAs, their scholastic opportunities, their opportunities to go to college, the military or the world of work. And so in a traditional graduation, you don't get those kinds of pieces of information out. So we're happy that we were able to, to combine the two. And that's the feedback from parents that I'm receiving on a regular basis.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We do appreciate what you put together. The next item that I had on the agenda there was I know that we do the summer, Nutrition is the Mission Bus. And I know it's sort of like, kind of kept rolling on from when we were serving lunches to the, the students and the community during the quarantine and while they were doing their, you know, working from home, doing their schoolwork from home. But in the past, we had volunteered to, the board had volunteered on certain days to, you know, contact and, and be with the, meet the nutrition bus and like that. And I didn't know whether we were looking to do that again this year, Mr. Smith. I mean, and Board, if you had an appetite to maybe volunteer one, you know, because I, and I don't know the schedule. I know the schedule toward the end, when you were doing the, the, the meals, it was being distributed only two times a week and they were giving out so many meals. So I wasn't sure what the schedule was, whether you were going to be looking for volunteers, whether you've already got it covered with your regular staff or whatever. So Mr. Smith, if you could give us some more information on that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Of course, the board is always welcome to participate in any activity. We don't necessarily need more volunteers, but it would be good to see board members and members from the executive team come out because I think that the families really appreciated seeing members of the board as well as the executive team come out and be part of the nutritionist, the mission bus. The other part is we have a food pantry and I can give you guys the date for the food pantry as well as the nutritionist, the mission bus. And remember, our numbers changed from twelve thousand students being served the summer that we did not have nutrition of the mission until it had transitioned to twenty-three thousand after the bus was incorporated. So we know that that was substantial, it actually doubled in, in size. So we're definitely going to keep that process moving. And if the board members would like to participate, feel free to. We'll actually kind of limit ourselves with the social distancing piece. So once I send out the schedule, if people are interested, please let me know and I can make sure that there's a slot available for you. I think we can create a good social distancing piece just by the way we distribute food and the way people in front of the Quell Ridge and the YMCA and some of the other stops that we make along the way.
That, that sounds good. I know that, are you doing it twice a week like the other meals were distributed? Or is there a different timeframe?
Well, the, remember the USDA gave us the opportunity to distribute meals Monday through Friday. This, this, the mission bus is a special one that's kind of funded in part. I know Ms. Rogless helped negotiate that, but it's, put it in part with Mercy, Mercy Health. And we're going to reach back out to them to see. I know that some of their cost has been changed because of COVID-19, but based on their donations that they gave us in order to coordinate the efforts with the food, I think we'll be in good shape this year to, to move the project forward. So this is the Saturday piece. Doc, the other part of it is we are showing up Mondays and Thursday, but the food is distributed. We have a Monday and Thursday drop-off, but it's actually five days worth of food.
Okay, okay. So it, it's, it's still like breakfast and lunch, is that what it is?
Yes, yes, it is, yes.
Sounds good. All right, well, if you could get that schedule out to us, then, you know, we could, you know, sign up if you want to. Board, it's no pressure, you don't have to sign up. But like you said, it's just nice to see a board member there from time to time or administrator there. And you don't have to necessarily ride the bus, you could just meet the bus there at its delivery point, you know, if that's what you want to do. I know when I went last summer, that's what I did. I had, the first time I volunteered, I tried to get up and down on the bus and my knees were like, I don't think so, this is not a good idea. That's a pretty high step when you've got two bad knees. So the next time when I volunteered, I just followed the bus in my car and I could get in and out of my own car a lot easier. So, you know, that was not a problem either, so.
Also, Dr. Johnson, the food that was given to the seniors? That was pretty tasty. Was that by Doc, Mr. Mark Doctor or was that from Olive Garden?
Which food are you referring to?
The food that was given to the seniors?
Honors?
The honors, the honors.
Yes, yes, ma'am. That was actually from Mark Doctor's Kitchen and the food was distributed. It was a hot meal, but it was distributed as a cold process so that they can heat it up at their leisure. And each family received the box meal. What we did is because we were, we were having issues about inclement weather and I'm glad you mentioned the Honors Diploma kids. We were having issues with implement, uh, inclement weather. And so we split the teams up in two and there were thirteen kids each. Some people went on the bus to do it with one group and then the other, of course, took the other bus. And we were able to get through without any kind of rain. There was rain in the forecast every single day, but we were able to get through it and the parents appreciated it. It was a wonderful thing. What we plan to do is to send you guys a video to two things. You'll have a video of the graduation for your keepsake as well as a video to the Honors Diploma recipients.
Well, that'll be nice. Thank you, Mr. Smith, we appreciate that. So Randy, I guess the next thing, Mr. Seymour, we have you up with the treasurer's report. Now, I just put in an update on the negotiations. I don't know how much you can tell us in this meeting, but just kind of let us know where we are or what may be the next step you might need to take and what our role would be.
Well, Ms. Wilson and I will start the process on June sixteenth and then we'll keep you posted.
Okay.
We haven't had any negotiation sessions. We're meeting with both groups on the same day, one in the morning and one in the afternoon.
So for your schedule, Dr. Johnson and the rest of the board, please be prepared. Giving it to you in advance, it will more than likely need an executive session after, during a board meeting. Our next one, I believe, is on the eighteenth.
Yeah. Okay.
Our next regular meeting?
Yeah. So that's when the negotiating team can give you guys an update of where we are with OC and the association.
Other than that, there's not really too much to say.
Okay, anything else for the treasurer's report, Mr. Seymour?
The only thing I want to remind you is that at the next regular meeting, I'll be bringing that resolution to proceed for the November levy of six point nine five mils. And that's it.
Okay, any questions on that, Board?
Not necessarily on that, but I know that the state was, at one point, that we're doing some cuts and the things. And I just want to know, has there been any additional cuts or any additional changes at the state funding level, Mr. Seymour?
The only thing that we know concretely is that we got cut five hundred and fifty-one thousand for the months of May and June. And we have been told to anticipate twice that amount for next year. And the status of the Student Success and Wellness Funds, we do not know. So if, let's say we lost twice that amount plus the Student Success and Wellness Funds, that's two point two million for next year.
Is that considering the calendar year?
Yes, July one, June thirty of next year, yeah. This year, we lost five hundred and fifty thousand for this fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth, but we lost them in our last three payments of the year.
Right. So you're saying we should anticipate losing about a million dollars next year?
That's what we've, we've heard. I've heard all kinds of scenarios and the best guesstimate right now is twice what we were cut this year.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
There is an error that we don't have a meeting on May eighteenth. We have a meeting on June fifteenth and the list, and the list, that's eight days, seven days from now, of course. And the list of dates, the list of dates.
June twenty-second. June twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
Excuse me, guys, June twenty-second is the meeting.
Okay, so it's not, the reason I said this was May eighteenth or the eighteenth came up.
Oh, yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not May eighteenth, it's June, but it's June twenty-second is our regular board meeting, right?
June twenty-second.
Yeah, two, two weeks from tonight.
Yeah, my error.
Okay, and the second thing is can someone take a careful look at the list, list of meetings on the left-hand side of the board docs? It's all goofed up.
Oh, really? Hold on. So you're saying the list of meetings in board docs are goofed up?
Well, the next meeting is listed as May eighteenth, which is where the error came from.
Well, no, May eighteenth, we had that meeting.
I know, I know, but, so they usually disappear.
Well, you know, they, they stayed there for, okay.
Meetings don't disappear.
Yeah, it's twenty-twenty, all of twenty-twenty.
So, so the next meeting, anyway, they're out of order, it looks like, that's all.
Oh, mine aren't out of order, Dr. Coupalotti?
It should, it should be, it should be the work session June eighth and the board meeting June twenty-second.
Well, the June twenty-second meeting isn't listed yet. I mean, they haven't put it in there yet.
It's still draft.
Yeah, but it's, it's on our regular calendar, though.
Right, sure, yeah. So the meeting, May the eighteenth, was our regular board meeting that we had last month. May the eleventh was the work session we had last month. So those go like backwards, I would say, you know.
Anyway, somebody can clean that up, maybe?
I, I, but mine doesn't look messy, I guess, John, is what I'm saying.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I am confused by seeing May eighteenth as the next meeting, that's all.
Oh, okay, all right, that was a previous meeting, that's what it was.
Yes.
That's a previous meeting, okay, cool, got it, got it, got it. Okay.
Clear list, board docs in reverse order.
Yes, they're in reverse order, sure. He's like, you guys don't understand what I'm saying at all. I get it. So you see June the eighth, you see May the eighteenth, you see May the eleventh, you see April twenty-seventh, am I right, John?
Yes, ma'am, but I don't, actually, on that whole list, there is no June twenty.
Second.
Second.
Right, and it won't be, it won't be until they draft it.
It's still in draft form. It won't be there until Jeanette releases it to the board.
Right.
Okay, okay, it's all right.
Got it, got it, clear as mud.
That's, that's how you confuse an old man, that's all.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't buy that old man stuff, you're sharp as a tack, I know better. All right, so Randy, is there anything else you need us to know at this time?
No, but thanks for asking.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so the next thing that we have, Mr. Smith. Now, the only thing that I was thinking about was the update on summer school, but if you have anything else that you need to share, this is your time, so.
The, the team, we're still working on the particular for summer school. I had the pleasure of, and thank you, Dr. Coupalotti, for the text and the email about making sure that we go slow and steady and not try to speed the process before young people and their teachers are ready to come back. And we, we've taken that, taken that to consideration. Right now, the, we're still planning the final stages where summer school would actually start Monday. And right now, because all the students that are eligible, that are going to be included, actually still have their Chromebooks, so we have not collected the Chromebooks intentionally and we're going to actually start it out remotely because I'm trying to wait to see how the daycare is fair, that open their doors back. Were there any spikes, were there any issues, were any, were there any concerns? Changing the opportunity to June fifteenth, there are some teachers that are really eligible, but I'm just going to give you guys just a heads up. Two of my neighboring districts have received over thirty-five letters from teachers saying that based on being medically fragile or there are some immune issues, they are not planning on returning in the fall, but they do expect to have a contract. At this point, we've not received any issues like that or requests from doctors or from teachers, but we anticipate that there might be that issue. So using summer school as our guide, we're going to go slow with summer school and there may be a face-to-face opportunity later on, but right now, we're starting remotely. The other part is the governor and the CDC has given us the opportunity to open up for sports and for conditioning. So you guys have about eighty-five kids on the football team. They've been sectioned off with six feet distancing. They have all the PPE and all the other parts that they need to have. You have basketball. You have basketball, uh, uh, sec-, uh, conditioning, as well as volleyball, conditioning, and soccer. So, uh, I want to give you an idea. It may air, I don't know for sure, but check, the Inquirer came and, uh, actually gave the athletic department kudos, saying that this was the most organized uh, return to sports program that they've seen in this particular area. And I'm talking about all of greater Cincinnati. So, I'm not sure if the story is going to air that way, but, um, it was kudos to Wentworth City Schools for what they've done. Then the other one is, I'm not sure if you guys are, are, um, familiar with the House Bill two thirty-nine. House Bill two thirty-nine will remove their seven end-of-course exams. House Bill two thirty-nine says there will be four, uh, they will eliminate three. And then there is going to be, um, a process where, for the year twenty twenty-one, the third grade guarantee is not going to be enforced. And then there's a amendment on the floor that the ACT will be an opt-in. And so those are some of the things that are absolutely on the horizon that I thought you guys may need to know about. Uh, there are thirty pages of House Bill two thirty-nine. And at your leisure, I would encourage you to read it because it's some particulars in there. Some of the people are encouraged and they're, some districts are excited about House Bill two thirty-nine because of the exempt exemption of students that are in third grade. I am very concerned. Because if you read any of the white papers on, uh, third grade guarantee, there's a lot of effort and energy and resources put into the third grade. But as soon as those students meet fourth grade status, it just drops off, and some of those kids actually don't perform as well. It concerns me, and I have to push the team in a different direction. Because the state of Ohio says that there's a third grade guarantee exemption, we're going to make sure we keep doing the reading improvement plans. And, uh, some of the other particulars, because I don't want it to drop off where it's a watered-down opportunity, because the state is saying they're not going to, to recommend it. That doesn't mean that we can't keep pushing the envelope. So of all the students that did not do well on the third grade guarantee, we're still going to have opportunities for them for the summer, and we're going to have opportunities for the summer for every second grader who looks like they may be struggling transitioning into third grade. So I wanted you guys to know that we're going to keep moving the needle, regardless of what the state says. Because if we don't, one day they make the change and, and we have not completed with enough rigor and enough assessments. They make the change and they say the third grade guarantee is back on, and then we're standing there with, looking foolish because we've not engaged the kids the right way. There are some districts that are going to focus on a educational plan that will roll out July first. You're going to have a comprehensive plan from me that rolls out July first as well, but it's about how to reopen the district and what the governor and the CDC is, is saying that are guidelines that we should follow. None of this is written in stone, because you guys know, if you look at the news, it changes every single day. And we're very, very careful not to put out something that we have to retract the story and come back later on and say, oops, we didn't mean that, we meant this. So, um, stay tuned. Uh, the other thing that you would like to be able to share with your, your constituents and your family members, we're getting a lot of, uh, good conversations about what's going to happen with the new buildings, with the, uh, distributed dining. Because the big dining rooms and trying to, uh, create the lunch opportunity, uh, the distributed dining is sounding very, very appealing to a lot of people. Because, uh, some districts are even talking about, uh, transitioning where the students actually eat in their classrooms instead of bringing large groups back together. Uh, in some cases, if you tried to hold a social distancing lunch opportunity, especially in our cafeteria, because we've done the timeline for it, we would actually need six and a half lunches in order to produce that environment. And you can't do that on a seven-bell day. So these are some of the highlights. Uh, and of course, you guys are very aware. We, we needed our kids to come back to be part of something positive and something good. Uh, we're only twenty-two or twenty miles from the city. And with the civil unrest, uh, taking place, we wanted our kids to know that we are reconnected and rebonded with them as it relates to athletics and other opportunities. So we don't want them to, um, engage in, in unhealthy things. Uh, we know that because of PBL, they work diligently to help solve problems of the world in their own school and their own activities. So a lot of them are encouraged about going and participating, but we wanted them to do it in a very peaceful way. And so some of the athletic opportunities gives them a distraction where they don't have to concentrate on all of the issues that are, uh, that are rising in the city. They could actually keep track of it in a variety of ways, but also participate from a safe distance.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I have one question. Um, when you were talking about the House Bill two thirty-nine, um, you made a statement on the ACT will be an opt-in. Can you explain to us what that means, opt-in?
Yes, they are, there are some, uh, universities, uh, even though ACT is part of their criteria. Students can opt if they want to take that test and use it as an entrance opportunity. We're not sure what leverage that gives a kid, if it takes away opportunities. Uh, we don't know if it takes away scholarship dollars. I know that Dr. Kupalati has been very engaged with the, uh, Gen One House. And I don't know if the ACT helps kids gain more financial resources or what it does. It sounds pretty, um, awesome, but it depends on how people use it and what they use it for.
Sure, okay. Dr. Kupalati, you have any input on that?
I don't know the fine point of whether the ACT helps them with financial resources. I, I'm not aware of any advantage. Um, so, but I can, I can check and get back with you at the next meeting or the following meeting.
Okay, yeah.
We know right now, Dr. Johnson, that when students are scoring higher on the ACT, it's, it actually gives them, um, more financial stability as far as scholarship dollars are concerned. But when they're saying opt-in, will they use kids' body of work? Because right now, what we're trying to work on is each young person through Navions would produce their own, uh, academic CD that they could send to universities to show their body of work, to show their presentation, to show the project-based learning enhanced skills that they have in conjunction with New Tech, along with the GPA, along with whatever other attributes they have, being involved in certain activities. Uh, it paints a better picture of them being a complete student as opposed to a one-dimensional. I scored this on the ACT, so here are the dollars and cents.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's, um, that, that's good. I, I wasn't sure how they were using that to, you know, the, the opt-in piece. Because, I mean, usually the ACT and SAT, those scores get you into certain colleges, period. Like, they want you to have a certain score before you can even be accepted into their building, you know, or into their program. So I wasn't sure if that was going to affect anything, like you say, with financial or whatever as well.
The landscape is changing rapidly as to what schools want. And it's going in the direction of not having those tests. Uh, they're, they're, they're rolling out, uh, this year, and then next year will be a lot more schools will be, um, opting out of accepting the tests.
I think in higher education, the whole, the total landscape of higher education has more schools have to figure out how to become more competitive with, um, other schools. Um, I think we'll see some flexibility that's happening in the entrance exams and, and things like that. Uh, I think as COVID nineteen has shaken up, um, the old way of look to your right, look to your left, um, some of you will make it, some of you won't. It's really, plus, in addition to this racial disparity or this racism pandemic, um, it's drawing attention to a lot of the things that have caused inequities, um, for black and bla- brown children. So I would just say, stay tuned and keep watching, um, the trends that's happening within higher ed. We've known that standardized testing has been an issue for a long time. Um, but we just ha- you know, if you're looking at the inequities in, in education, the inequities in districts and things like that, um, with the resources, it's, you know, people are starting to listen. So I would just say, stay tuned, stay up on, on the trends, and let's make sure that we are preparing our kids to make the best options when it comes down to opting in on, and, and opting out of certain things.
So, I, 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 I do have the answer for you now, if you would like to hear it.
Sure.
All right, for the University of Cincinnati, they have made, um, almost all programs test optional, that is, you don't need an ACT or an SAT exam. It's still required for the university honors program, the College of Nursing directed MIT, and the Early Childhood Education Program. Other than that, it's, they're not being used.
But to Mr. Smith's point, you know, what, you know, some students who say, oh, I don't test well, I'm not a good test taker. And so they're like, okay, my dream is to go to this school. I can opt out and I can get in. But are they opting out of scholarship opportunities? What we need to understand is how are the schools, the universities, um, leveling the playing field for scholarships and financial opportunities if they're doing an opt-out? I see where it could potentially be one of those, aha, gotcha, you missed out because you don't have this.
This, Mr. Smith, this year, absolutely correct. I mean, that's my concern. Uh, can you mute while you type?
Dr. Johnson, can you mute?
I'm not typing, that's Dr. Kupalati.
I mean, he's going a mile a minute here.
He's going, you, you, you're typing really fast, too. I mean, really, appreciate that.
Dissertation or what, but that was, that was pretty impressive, right? But here's the situation. Right now, um, there are a lot of young people that are unsure about their, um, university situations, because their universities are saying, we may not open the first semester. So that is a big concern. Now, the people that are not part of that situation right now are the fall athletes. The fall athletes are already reporting to university, so they are actually in, in good shape. But we are very concerned about the young people that need that information or need that transition to the university. They need to get away, they need to be part of that experiences sooner than later. And they're saying that you may not be able to go, uh, because of COVID nineteen to your university of your choice until second semester. What the high school is now doing, those kids, we're letting them hold on right now to their Chromebooks so we can keep communicating with them to tell them to stay engaged and stay part of an experience of an online, it's Cincinnati State has a wonderful one, Oberlin College has a wonderful one, uh, University of Cincinnati. And so, getting your first semester under your belt from home is actually cheaper. But there are some kids that really want to be part of experiences at major universities, and we don't know if that's going to happen. So that's why we were very, very concerned about the ACT. It's almost like the third grade guarantee. Because they say it's not going to penalize kids. Sometimes you guys know that whatever we actually use as an accountability system, that's what we really take real serious issues with. When people give us freelance opportunities to say, oh, that won't be counted, we tend to not be as serious about it. And I want to make sure that we don't fall short of what the state says, because this is our district. It doesn't, it's not the state's district. It's local control to make sure that our kids are getting all the opportunities that they deserve.
And, and that is, uh,
Go ahead, Katrina.
Extremely, um, correct, because I know for a lot of times with the students who were coming in at Cincinnati State, you know, we would really have to tell them, you know, although you have to take the compu- compass test or the AccuPlacer, it is a placement test. Cincinnati State is open enrollment. The scores are not going to, you know, determine whether you get in or out. A lot of students who placed in remedial, um, math and reading and language, you know, they were surprised. They were like, what do you mean, I, I have to take classes because with, that's no credit? And they said, because these are your, what your scores are. But then, if, if you start to unpeel the onion, you start to talk to them and say, oh, I didn't take it serious. I just went in there and get it over with.
One thing about those tests, Katrina.
With them to go back and get the advisors, to give them an opportunity to take the test again, because they didn't understand the cost implications of not taking it seriously.
Those tests, now, we are, we are now, Cincinnati State is now test optional, sort of like what Dr. Kupalati was talking about. So the AccuPlacer is gone. We don't have that anymore. We're not going to do the comp- well, right now, the Compass ACT test that they have, the only students that are required to take them, and I'm not sure how long that will last, are the students with English as a second language, uh, because they need to see where they place in, um, the language, uh, English class like that. But we are using now high school scores, you know, like what they, what their GPA or high school score was. And, um, that's where they're placing them in English comp. So like, some of the remedial, you know, it used to be that, you know, the remedial classes were overloaded, very full. Um, some of those have been, uh, eliminated or reduced. Um, or they set them up as sort of like, I don't want to call it like training camps, like where you can go do a power camp for two weeks or three weeks and get into the regular math class or the regular English class. Because what they were finding out is students were spending so much time taking, uh, the remedial courses that by the time they got to their regular courses, they're like, they're burnt out. You know, if I've taken almost a year worth of remedial courses. So, um, I was asking a question about the, the ACT opt-out, because I know that at Cincinnati State, we are doing away with it. So I was wondering, yes?
Johnson, you are, you are absolutely correct. Here's my concern. Uh, imagine all members of the board, all five members of the board being college professors. Um, there, it's going to take somebody with some sensitivity issues around students and their abilities to complete the mathematical equations and to write eloquently on the, the design or whatever they're working on, because all of these kids, every kid in, in the states has missed several months of school. So they are rusty in their application, and it depends on how uh, equipped that professor is, not to necessarily, uh, delve out work and say, complete it, but the sensitivity of it and giving kids an opportunity to learn while they grow. Otherwise, you'll see the college ranks actually be depleted, because kids will just be flunking out of school left and right.
That's the reimagining of higher education. They're going to have to be very student-centric. That I think higher education in some schools, some universities get it right, and some of them just don't. And, and, um, I think it's going to come from the top down, from the instructors in the classrooms, that they're going to have to realize that there have been inequities in education for years. And, and all students can learn and all students can achieve. And we, you know, I, I said a long time ago, my job is to put myself out of business of trying to triage students. But everybody's capable of having that, um, opinion, you know, much like, or that approach that Mr. Smith is talking about as it relates to, um, giving students an opportunity to grow while they, while they learn.
And yeah, and if we're, if we're not that diligent about it, I'm going to tell you, here's the aftermath. There will be an increasing amount of students being placed or recommended for, to be students on IEPs with disabilities, because we have not filled in the gaps of their learning. Uh, we've not filled in the gaps because of what happened in March. So we've got March, April, May, June, July. You've got five months. We, we are not used to having, uh, without having educational resources for students for these, this many months. No district is familiar with this. I want to make sure that we're, we, that, that we keep pushing the envelope and that we prepare kids the right way and to help them fill in the gaps, because fourth quarter did not happen. We can celebrate and talk about the remote learning, but you know, some kids need DI. DI is direct instruction. They need a teacher, they need somebody face-to-face in order for this thing to work like it's supposed to. Because I don't want to Because I don't want to increase Tanya Bray's numbers where we're starting to recommend more kids with disabilities because you guys know what that kid's going to look like. It's going to be that African American boy that's going to be increasingly encouraged to be part of an IEP opportunity and going to special ed. And that's not right.
Well, I think that this is, this is very good discussion in that we have to keep our finger on the pulse of what is going to transpire and how it will roll out. And, and, and of course, keeping in line with the state mandates. You know, what they mandate is appropriate for return to school and return to activities. But as we move into our summer school, Mr. Smith, if you could just kind of keep us up to date on what that's looking like and how it's working. And, you know, the goods, the bad, the ugly, I mean, you know, like, because, you know, parents are going to be coming to us complaining, this isn't working, this, you know, or whatever. And we won't have any explanation for them because we don't know what it really is going to look like. So just kind of keep us up to date on that.
I will actually give you guys, actually, weekly updates of how summer school is progressing. Usually I'll give you some information at the end, but because of the unprecedented issues that we're dealing with, I will make sure that I give the board updated, weekly updates. How many kids are progressing? How many kids are attending? What the Zoom meetings look like? How many teachers are incorporated into the work? How many parents are part of the process? The other thing that I'm going to send the board, and this is the last part of my update, is I'm going to send you the findings of the staff update, I mean, questionnaire. We did a staff survey about, you know, COVID and the safety and the safety of our district and how they feel about it. And so we're compiling that data now so that you guys could be very, very aware of what's happening in the community so that when people come up to you, you'll have facts and not just, everybody's just their own testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, that's appreciated. The next items on the agenda are the committee reports and the semi, knowledge, we haven't really had very many meetings, but the financial advisory committee, is there any update, Mr. Birdy?
No, I, I don't have anything, Randy, do you have anything?
No, not since our five-year forecast. We know nothing new yet for state funding yet.
Right, okay, and then we have the resolution that we're going to look to get ready to go at the next meeting.
Dr. Johnson, I'm sorry for cutting in, but I'm asking the board because I created a document that would be a document that could live in our work and not just be a conversation of, I have a report, I don't have a report. I did something very comprehensive where there is a, a document that we can use that could stay with the Board of Education for many years. If we go back and look at our summary and talk about accountability. And I'm hoping that people begin to use the form because at this point, no one's using it.
Mr. Smith, if you would just send that document back out to all of us. I'm sure that we have it somewhere.
I will do that.
If you can send it back out to us so that we could. And, and, and are you saying that you'd like for us to complete the document at every work session, whether we have an update or not?
That would, because I think it would actually give us an accountability plan of where we are. And I think it would be a more complete document that you can pass on to another board in the event that you have to do so.
Okay, okay, that's fine. If, if you would send it back out to all of us, then we could start doing that, I suppose, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. SAC, I don't think we have anything. Mrs. Ruggles, do you have anything to update us?
We don't typically do too much in, in May. And given the fact that, you know, just to piggyback on what Mr. Smith said about the document that he provides, I think it would be very helpful because it's, it's extremely easy to let the month go by and, and we miss out on some things that is happening. So as far as SAC, Mr. Smith, please let me know if I am incorrect. I know that May is usually really aggressive. So I don't have anything aside from, you know, all of, you know, the graduation activities that have happened and the discussions on summer school, which I think Mr. Smith has already addressed, so.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I have, yeah, the only thing that I have that's coming from SAC and it's actually, doesn't occur until August. We have to determine what a summer graduation will look like because it'll be smaller numbers. Are we talking about having one virtual? Is it going to be live? How does it look? Where do we do it? Because I think we cannot forget those students that are graduating later on as opposed to being with their peers just as a few weeks ago.
May I ask that if there is any activity, please let me know so I can participate. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Birdy, I mean, Mr. Dr. Kupuletti.
How about just John is fine.
When you wear that tie, it's Dr. Kupuletti.
Yes, I believe that, I, I'm here for that, right?
We just call you J.C.
That's fine.
Okay, for the community engagement, I don't think we have anything. Mr. McGowan's is not here today. And I think the only thing that we would have is to talk about the, the honors diplomas, delivering the dinners the way they did. That would be part of community engagement, but I'm not sure whether there's anything else that's going on.
There is something else. We have to just send some information out to parents and try to get some feedback from the primary schools about kindergarten jumpstart. Because we have to figure out, how do we make that happen?
Okay.
And I think Mr. Smith already alluded to the survey that's going out. That's, that's still, I, I don't know, it's community engagement because it's looking at how our teachers and, you know, are feeling about the, the experience. So we can build upon that, so.
Okay. All right, sounds good. The political jurisdiction liaison, Mr. Smith hit on what I was going to bring up about House Bill. He had a few other things. The only thing I had really was going to highlight out of that was the end of the course exams and the third grade guarantee. And he's already talked about that. As I get anything from him or from other, other sources for the political jurisdiction information, I will forward it on to you, Board, so that we don't have to do a whole big briefing on it and you can read it at your leisure. So that's, that's all I have for the political jurisdiction. Mr., yeah, Mr. Smith, you have something?
No, I'm just sorry for stealing your report. I know you were excited.
Oh, no, 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 that's okay, no, 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 no. That, that was the only two things that I had seen and, and you covered it. And you covered it so much more thoroughly than I would have been able to. So that's, that's perfect, that's perfect that you brought that up. And I didn't, and that's why when you had to mention the ACT opt out, I, that, that was kind of big. I didn't read the whole thing. So, you know, there's quite of other, bit other information in there, too, so. There isn't a need for an executive session, Board. Is there anyone who would like to add anything at this time before we close our session?
Yeah, Dr. Johnson, I'm sorry. Can you guys become familiar with this House Bill 606, whi- which is a liability bill? And some people are saying that they're not fit to return because of COVID. And then be very aware of Senate Bill 319.
Okay. House Bill 606, liability bill, not fit to return, and Senate Bill 319.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There are physicians waiting to write those orders as we speak.
Yeah, and that's going to, that's going to bring a serious shortfall of teachers because we do, most of the area schools draw their substitute from the same consortium. Except for two teachers. So that's going to give us an extreme shortfall.
Also will cost you more money, you're going to have to pay them sick leave.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And then the other one is, there's some new legislation coming from the Transportation Department. I'll have more for you guys after I meet with the commissioner. There's new information coming from the Transportation Department. That they're not going to use the six-foot issue, the six-foot distancing for kids on buses, but they're going to talk about 36 inches. Why the magic number 36 came into play is because that's how much of distance is from seat to seat with one person per seat. So it's not just, hey, how did that come into play? It's really a measurement of distance of seats on a bus. It's going to increase routes, change a whole lot of different things. There was also the conversation about having a Plexiglas partition for the drivers. The state of Ohio, the state trooper says, guess what, Highway Patrol, that is the most unsafe thing that you can do at this point. Because you won't hear the kids, in the event that there is any kind of collision, the Plexiglas would actually create more of a safety problem.
I agree.
Yeah, when the kids return though, Mr. Smith, are they talking about them returning with, with masks? Like even for summer school?
It's, it's, it's interesting, Doc, that you mentioned that. Okay, so I'm not sure if you guys have heard that Coney is, Coney Island's going to open up in a few days. And they, King's Island is suing somebody to make sure that they open. And swimming pools are open and all these other kinds of things. And the athletic part of it is opening. It seems like the one that's not opening with any kind of affinity is what happens inside the schoolhouse. Be foolish, we would be foolish, you know, a foolish organization if we opened, if we incorporated an entire athletic opportunity for athletes to participate. And then we're talking about going every other day for an academic thing. We're academic first and foremost. The athletic is a subset of who we are and what we do. We're trying to figure out with the instrumentation, what do we do with our marching band? You can't play that instrument with a mask on. So there are so many different variables to it, but I'm going to keep you guys up to date so you know exactly what I know.
Is the band planning on having some sort of band camp this summer?
That, that's the question because the band is saying, listen, we have the same rights as these athletes do. And music actually is a gateway to college. You get music scholarships and opportunities. So you're stopping me from getting my opportunity.
Right, right, okay, wow. Okay. Well, this is all very interesting. We'll, we'll just have to, like I say, keep our hands on the pulse to, to, to try to figure out what our next move is and try to be as proactive as possible. As I, I, I really feel like Mr. Seymour and Mr. Smith has done very good with staying ahead of a lot of what's going on and keeping us abreast of it. So we appreciate you all for that. So anyone else? Mrs. Ruggles, were you about to say something?
Yeah, as far as the political jurisdictions, I was just going to say, make sure that each liaison is aware of what's happening in the communities as it relates to Black Lives Matters, any protests, working with the, the leaders. Because I know that there was a demonstration, I'm going to call it a demonstration in Green Hills. I don't know if the other one went off, but there were at least two because I did reach out to Chief Fertleman. But, you know, understanding what they are and if they are happening and how and if we want to be a part of those. Because we do have a large black and brown population. And we need to be aware of, as Mr. Smith alluded to it a little bit, about how our students are feeling. So we want to make sure that we are aware of what's happening in our political jurisdictions. I know that Dr. Wilson did a graduation parade and I did see, it was actually really nice. It was a variety of students from every community, from Springfield Township, Green Hills, Forest Park, different schools. I did see Mayan Williams there. So that, you know, just really having a touch point of what's happening in the community and how we can be a part of, have a presence in these activities and finding the appropriate way to represent the district.
And that might cross over a little bit with community engagement, too, you know, since it is something that's going on in the community. Political jurisdiction, yes, but also it seems like it crosses over a little bit with community engagement, so. Okay, anyone else, Mr. Birdy?
No, I just want to tell Mr. Smith, you know, we appreciate your focus on the, the impact on the students, even though if the state is eliminating, eliminating requirements, what, what's the right answer for the students and just making sure they don't get left behind? So thank you for that.
Great, Dr. Kupuletti?
Only that I appreciate as many updates I can get as this, as the situation unfolds and decisions are being considered and made. It is very helpful.
I agree. Mr. Smith or Mr. Seymour, is there anything else you would like to add before we close this meeting?
We just got knocked out, but I'm trying to bring us back.
Oh, we hear you fine. We see you fine, we hear you fine, what are you talking about? You didn't go anywhere for us.
Mr. Seymour just did something to my screen.
I didn't touch it.
Randy.
I'm happy that there are two in this room so I can always blame somebody. There we go, I'm back.
Are you guys good over there?
Yeah, we're good. I just want to thank my, my colleague, Ms. Hobbs, for being that flag and keeping us together, you know, for these meetings.
Absolutely. Absolutely, we want to thank Mrs. Hobbs and the Waycross community for being on board with us for our work sessions. It's kind of nice having them on board so that this stuff is documented just like our regular board meetings are documented. So we appreciate the Waycross community and Mrs. Hobbs for their efforts in making sure that our technology is all up to date and working. Okay, so if there's nothing else, then we'll just call this work session adjourned. And if you have anything that you need me to know, just send me an email or, and then we'll get it on the next agenda for the next work session. And Mr. Smith, Mrs. Ruggles and I will be online with you to do our agenda critique sometime next week then, right?
Oh, no, okay, yeah, I know.
Oh, no?
I was, I was just excited, I just didn't know what to say, I was lost for words, Doc, I apologize.
Oh, yeah, this is, the excitement of being in another online meeting, I'm sure, is overwhelming to you.
And, oh, Dr. Johnson, I think I'm just going to put this out, a seed out. So we, we can start thinking about when we will transition, when and if we will transition from Zoom meetings. So just something for Board members to start thinking about.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm pretty good. I've already had, I've had five deaths in the family that I can count that I know. But with my mother, with 13 sisters and three brothers, there's probably cousins that I don't know about. Those are just the ones that I know. Somebody from my church passed away. My family here in Cincinnati, they've all been tested positive, have been under quarantine. So I'm not in a hurry, basically, you know, to, to, to run out. But I will, you know, leave that up to the other Board members and, and the state when they say things are good. I haven't been out of the house. I even gave my card to my daughter, I'm like, I, I'm not going anywhere. I go to a grocery store. I go to a grocery store, buy a bunch of stuff that lasts for about a month and that's it, you know, so. Anyway, um, so tha- thank you though, Mrs. Ruggles, we will keep that in our, in the back of our mind. Way, way. Alright, guys, hey, listen, I appreciate you all coming out uh for the meeting tonight and um we'll all be in touch. You guys stay safe and uh healthy, okay?
Alright, everybody get home safe.